I'd like to call the Buttes Silver Bow Council of Commissioners, special meeting for Wednesday, June 22nd, 22 to order. Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Nine present, three absent.
Nine present, three absent. Please note that Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Shea, and Commissioner Anderson are abscending excuse from tonight. Commissioner Sorge, could we please have the prayer and the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, fellow commissioners. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night. As we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Buttes Silver Bow, direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Blue agents to the flag. I'd like to ask for any public comment on any item on tonight's special meeting agenda, seeing none. Now I'll call for the special meeting. J.P. Gallagher, Chief Executive, is calling for a special meeting of the Buttes Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022 at 7:30 PM, proceeding the committee of the whole meeting in the council chambers, room 312, to act upon the following. Communication number 2022-324, Kristen Rosa, requesting Chief Executive J.P. Gallagher to sign the agreement outlined below for the TIFID prior to the sunset, the tax increment provision on June 30th, 2022. We have five different agreements in here, and I'll read through them all. Agreement form and notice to proceed with MJD contracting for construction and required infrastructure for the rail parks division, subdivision, I'm sorry. Number two, development agreement between RIFID and Public Works, allowing for subdivision construction to be completed in the TIFID, is unable to complete this subdivision and acquire preliminary plat approval. And number three, development agreement with MRJW1, development for infrastructure assistance. Number four, customer agreement with Northwestern Energy for growth and development in the rail park subdivision, bringing gas and electricity to the newly created parcels. And number five, customer agreement with Northwestern Energy for electrical pole movement, electrical pole move and additions to accommodate the new roads that will be constructed as part of the rail park subdivision. So does commissioners have any questions of Ms. Rosa? I know she presented all of these last week to you, and I was just wondering, we can bring her up if you would like for her to present any more information tonight. Seeing none, I will go to Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I move to concur and place on file communication number 2022-324.
We have a motion and a second to concur and place on file communication number 2022-324. Is anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yea, zero nay.
Nine yea, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to our second communication, communication number 2022-325, Eileen Joyce, County Attorney, requesting Chief Executive J.P. Gallagher to sign the attached contract amendment number one for number four dash E, legal services between city and county of Buttes Silver Bow, Montana City and County, and the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. The purpose of this contract is to provide reimbursement to the city and county for legal services provided for the dependent and neglect cases on behalf of the department. And I guess County Attorney Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We currently are, have entered into a contract that is supposed to expire on June 30th, and the Department of Public Health and Human Services sent over this amendment and asked that it be approved before June 30th, so that's why it's on the special meeting agenda tonight. And the amendments are to extend the term from July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2024, and additionally to change the format for the reimbursement. And what title four E, legal services is about is money that the federal government provides for foster care placements, and it is provided by the federal government and goes to the state and then goes down to the local county attorney's offices that handle dependent and neglect cases. And the reimbursement method is a little different for Buttes Silver Bow because we contract out those services with the private legal firm. Mark the service does our D N cases for us, and so that's what the amendments are about.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Is there any questions of commissioners? Seeing none, Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher. I move to concur and place on file communication number 2022-325.
Second. We have a motion and a second to place communication number 2022-325 to concur and place on file. Is there anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
Nine yea, zero nay.
Nine yea, zero nay, motion passes. And that concludes tonight's special meeting. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Fredrickson.
Will everyone check in again?
All right. Hello. I will call to order the Buttes Silver Bow Council of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda for Wednesday, June 22nd. Can I have a roll call, please?
Eight present, three absent, one presiding.
All right. Please let the record show that Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Shaw are excused. We've already done the prayer and the pledge, so I'll move to public comment on any items on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. We'll move into section one, communications. Communication number 2022-268, Kristen Rosa, TIFID Administrator, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a bid opening for June 15th, 2022, for the Montana Corrections Rail Park Road and Utility Construction Project. We had that bid opening last Wednesday, so Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we concur with communication number 2022-268 and place on file.
Second.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second. Can commissioners please vote?
Nine yea, zero nay.
Nine yea's, zero nay's, motion passes. Two, communication number 2022-268, Kristen Rosa, TIFID Administrator, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule time on the June 15th, 2022, regular meeting agenda to give a presentation of the annual reports for the URA, HSA, TED, and TIFID. We had that presentation last week, so Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we concur with communication number 2022-269 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the communication. Can commissioners vote?
Nine yea, zero nay.
Nine yea's, zero nays, motion passes. Three, communication number 2022-283, Mark Canary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule time on the June 15th, 2022, regular meeting agenda for a presentation on countywide maintenance district work plan update for fiscal year 2022 and work plan for fiscal year 2023. We had that presentation last Wednesday, so Commissioner Sorge.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we concur with communication number 2022-283 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the communication. Can commissioners please vote?
Nine yea, zero nay.
Nine yea, zero nay, motion passes. Four, communication number 2022-296, Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, notifying the Council of Commissioners that the fiscal year 2023 preliminary budget will be referred to the Finance and Budget Committee for July 6, 2022, Finance and Budget Committee meeting, which will be scheduled to start at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. We will hold that till July 6th. Number five, communication number 2022-305, Mark Canary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a bid opening for July 6, 2022, for the above-ground field tanks for the city-county. We will hold that until the July 6th bid opening. Six, communication number 2022-311, Linda Sager-Joyce, clerk and recorder, requesting Council of Commissioners permission to call a special meeting with the Council of Commissioners and the Canvas Board to meet on Monday, June 20th, 2022, at 4:30 PM in room 312, council chambers, to canvass and certify the 2022 primary election. So we held that on Tuesday, or Monday, excuse me. Does clerk and recorder want to speak to that, or are we, we're good? If you'd like. Sorry.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Linda Sager-Joyce, clerk and recorder and an election administrator for Buttes Silver Bow. We did find one problem in Precinct 14 where 36 votes were not counted. We convened a recount board today, and they recounted the ballots, counted, they counted the 76 that were there and added the 36 that they also found, that we found, and they accepted the tally as they found it.
Are there any questions for the clerk and recorder? All right. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we accept the canvas, recount, and concur and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can commissioners please vote?
Nine, nine yea, zero nay.
Nine yea's, zero nays, motion passes. That concludes our committee of the whole meeting. Now I call for public, public comment on any matter not on the agenda. And your name and record, your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, I'm not fluent in public speaking by any means. I don't like coming here and saying anything, really. I'm coming here because...
Name and record for the...
I'm sorry. Rich, Rich Penhaligon, 828 West Court Street, Butte, Montana. And to tell you the truth, I'm not sure if it's even relevant anymore. I'm not sure if you, if this commission has passed the taxes, the tax increase for streets for multi-unit buildings yet, or if that is still something that's going to be decided on. That's what I'm here to talk about very briefly. So I'm talking about the increase in street taxes for the multi-unit buildings that you're pondering. I want to say first is that apartment renters are less able to pay these increase in taxes. I have a, I have a multi-unit building, and if I get increases in every single unit, I'll be passing it on, I'll be passing it on to each of the apartment renters. And single fam, single-family homes will stay one unit, from what I understand in the paper. I don't know if I'm correct on this or not. Single-family homes will, on average, have more cars and trucks using the road than people that are renting an apartment. Usually, people in apartments have one, maybe two, but usually probably one, but on average, they have less cars and/or trucks using the roads. But you want to charge them the exact amount that a huge single-family home has, and a whole family with all these cars and trucks. But you want to charge each apartment the same as a single-family home. I'm not saying that it's fair right now, okay? And I understand why you're doing it. But maybe you should think about charging a multi-unit building a little less per unit than a single-family home, because I think that would be fair to the number of people renting in those units versus a single-family home. And, and I, and since I'm up here and I came up here today, I just want to say one more thing. I'm done with that. You guys are going to decide whatever you're going to do. I think it's pretty logical what I bring up here. I just want to say one thing about the Loves Truck Stop issue. I know this is not your purview, especially at this time. I don't know if it ever was. I assume they probably gave speeches or presentations to the commissioners at one time on both sides. Think about what has happened here to these 400 families and that residents that have called themselves, and I have no fight in this, zero, zero fight in this game. All I want, or all I think is that there should be some equality and fairness to this issue. Think about what's happened. Public County Agency said to the residents of Ramsey that they would get a hearing in the zoning board. Before that happened, Loves was given all the necessary supposed building permits. And I get it, Loves wants to put something in. So they're going to say, hey, let's start moving this stuff, and makes it harder for everyone else to do anything about it. I get it. I'm not stupid, and neither are you guys. District judge put a stop to it till the zoning board ruled, but that just wasn't enough. They couldn't just wait and make it at least look like everything is fair. But instead, was it yesterday, came out that, oh, it's okay, they can still, let them go move dirt. Let them keep working. Do we think like we don't know what the ruling's going to be in the zoning board? Do we really not think what we know? Do we not think what's going to happen there? going to happen there? I know what's going to happen there. You are the people that help all the citizens of Buttes Silver Bow, and should think about those residents there. They didn't get a fair shake. Thank you so much. Thank you for your comment. All right. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion when we adjourn, chat's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you.